It was made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. I noticed to go back into session. All those in favor, that's the unanimous vote. And at first, I just want to hope everybody had a great holiday weekend. All the dads had a terrific Father's Day. And I know we have a lot of business to get into today, but I wanted to start off with that nice thought at first. I don't know if Dr. Kerbel, you or Joe Scanlon, or anybody would like to to open things up? If there's any changes that have been made or any, I know there's some information we were looking for. If there's been any new information provided. I'm going to have to step out briefly at seven. I have another meeting to join. Seven, I'll probably be in about fifteen, twenty minutes. And then I'll be coming back in after that. Mrs. Dunn will be the host or be the run the meeting in my in my place while I'm out for that period of time. So that'll be at seven o'clock and and I will just duck out at that time. But Dr. Kerbel, I didn't know if there's anything that you wanted to start with or or Mr. Scanlon? Or anybody from your team that wanted to open things up? If there were, as I said, some changes or some information that we were able to obtain since our last meeting?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. It looks like I can't tell the visual, looks like I'm frozen, but it's all right. I want to thank Maj McCurey for once again delivering the package this evening. Hopefully you got it. Thanks to Maj and Joe's and Joe's put together. I think some summaries today for you that I think would be helpful, document some change. So we have a central office here and want to thank everybody. Thanks to Josh, too. And so everybody can chip in, but let Joe, when Joe's ready, Joe can lead. Make sure you're on mute, Joe.
You want me to go through the budget first and then you do presentation later?
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
All right, let me grab the screen. All right, this is a budget version number nine. We made a series of changes over the last twenty-four hours. What I'll do is just cover them page by page. First, we're giving you a total new number. Because one of the things that we compared to last year was that the district was reporting total in district enrollment plus telling you the number of students that are out of district placements. These are placements, school choice, tuition based. Those are in charter schools is what I was trying to say. So these are total of resident students, six hundred, six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three. So that was one change. In terms of total changes, we'll go through this as we go through. Each one of these is slightly different. We made some big changes in all the schools. We changed the substitute accounts. All the schools have budgets in two accounts. Short-term subs and long-term subs. All the schools are based on an average of approximately a hundred and fifty-one dollars per pupil. And we've allocated those accounts. So overall, there's no change in the sub account, but you'll see that detail. Probably the biggest change, you can look down here, the bottom half, this, the athletics. It jumped up by four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Because as we're going through these phys ed and health teachers, it just proved too challenging. We took them out of all the schools and put them all into athletics, which is something that we've talked about doing for a while. That actually proved very beneficial in that we trued up all the FTEs and we were able to reduce overall budgets, probably about about eighty thousand. So some of the other changes that we've made are school specific. We're able to get a couple paras back into the schools. The library para at Higgins and then a whole number of other sped paras. I realized we're going to go over this when I go through the schools, so might as well start rolling down. So that's the staff budget, that's the ordinary budget. So here's Burke. What we ended up doing here is just some minor updates. The overall numbers didn't change. And the one house cleaning thing was I had the numbers for the library para professional in twenty, but they weren't there, you know, so it was showing a reduction. So that's a minor cleanup there. Rolling down, looking into Burke, we made a couple changes. Here, we were able to get a couple of the sped para professionals back into the budget. This was showing a reduction here. So that was something that we were able to do is some of the overall shifting of the salaries in between some of the changes, such as with the phys ed in this respective school. So scrolling on into Carol. No overall dramatic change here, except as we talked about, I haven't spent enough time. So let me talk about the three sub accounts. This, these three lines, I'll highlight them and then, you know, we can let it go. Because I'm sure that makes it harder to read. What we did was we took the budget that was in the substitute accounts. This was the number for twenty. And then we broke it up by short term and then long term. And what we ended up doing is doing a basically a one-third to long term, two-thirds to short term. And we set it by the hundred and fifty-one per pupil. So these numbers don't necessarily balance out. I'm going to scroll backwards and we'll look at another school. So this is Burke. So Burke substitutes for thirteen actually increased because they weren't shown as the overall, because they had all three accounts budgeted last year, which this year, which threw them off proportionally. Scrolling back one more time, look at Brown. So what we did with Brown was that we had a hundred and nineteen in there and this one disproportionate. We ended up moving that, it's not in there in the twenty budget anymore. And then their numbers next year are much lower, but it works out to the hundred and fifty-one per pupil. So it's almost exact. Every single school is a hundred and fifty-one per pupil at next year's enrollment number. All right, so we were down here looking at McCarthy. No significant changes here, except for those changes. Subs went from forty-five to roughly the same. So overall, but still set at that dollar amount. The, excuse me, phys ed, you see in every school, they've been balanced out. So they're all into the athletic revolving. So we'll see another sub that we can look at here is South went from fifty. He's over fifty now, hundred and fifty-one per pupil. Phys ed zeroed out because they all moved over to the athletic revolving. So Welch Elementary substitutes had forty-three almost, now has over sixty, based on that one fifty per pupil. And then the phys ed all moved over to the athletic budget. Let me just pause for a minute, make sure there was no other changes, no other changes here in Welch. This is West, a few changes that we made here. In the general instruction line, we had a larger increase because we were budgeting a retiree salary at the same level as the existing teacher. So we made that revision and dropped it down to the starting salary. We use a budget around sixty-five thousand. So that one came down. There's the substitute line, had forty, has a little bit less than that now. But again, it's all matches the one fifty-one. And then the phys ed has completely been moved out. And no other notes of West that we changed. Excuse me. So in Higgins, a few changes. We put the para professional into the library. We made the changes with the substitutes and we made the changes with the, oh, no, I'm sorry. We did not make the changes with the phys ed and the health. We had this debate, we decided to leave all the phys ed and health teachers in Higgins and the high school because they never move around.
Mr. Scanlon, I'm sorry to interrupt again. We're having some trouble with the optics again, like the last time. We can have just the one screen highlighted and when people are looking at your screen, they can see multiple people. Not sure exactly how to fix that. But if we can get back to just one person speaking, that little black line at the very top, the second from the left icon usually does that. I don't know what you're seeing on your screen, but what people are seeing is it's covering the numbers.
It's been corrected, Dr. Lord, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, thank you.
All right, so this is Higgins. At the high school, we had made some just minor corrections that didn't change the budget. This world language, we were showing a ten, but it's nine for each year. That was just a minor, it didn't change the budget, short of what was discussed last night. So overall, no changes to the high school, the phys ed stayed in, substitutes had a the, a large budget allocation, one-third, two-thirds. They had been using those accounts previously, so that worked out. This is the balance of the high school. And then heading through the departments, no significant change. We'll go up to athletics. Vocational, I think this is, I needed to change some of these percentage calculations. Curriculum, we had added that in terms of the supplies, but that's consistent was what was before. Performing arts, no change. Athletics, we can talk about, what we did is we reflected the number of teachers that we had elementary PE. So the FTE went from five, you know, to eleven because some of the teachers were budgeted in athletics and in the schools. And I think overall, as we were looking at it last night, the FTEs weren't adding up correctly because we actually had two teachers that had greater than one FTE. So that was what I meant was when we went through, even though it's going up four hundred and sixty-one here, the net to the schools actually is a slight reduction of about eighty thousand, which we then recycled through some other areas that we wanted to look at. Special education, we made one change in the psychologists during the course of the year. We had a couple retirees that were replaced, but the salaries were still reflecting the original employees. So we lowered them to the current salaries. And then we were able to add some of the sped para positions back in, which was a concern of Carla's, that we had reduced too many of those. So it's really the same balances out to what was there previously. Staff development, no change. Custodial plant, no change. I just did add that count down there so that we could carry the conversation through. Transportation, there was one change, which was the adjustment that I think one of the, you pointed out last night, is that we took the transportation overtime out of athletics, but it wasn't put in transportation. So I put that in, so now that budget is true. That's a kind of an accounting transfer that we'll be making. District-wide administration, no change overall. But one of the things that I had pointed out to to Steve and to Carla when we were talking before, is this, the health insurance budget is actually keeping pace when we're making position changes. So this number here is probably about sixty thousand higher than it was in the prior version because we added positions back in. So overall, our budget, there's technology. So what I'm going to do is I'll scroll back up to the top. I should have started with the number. The number is very close to, you know, where we were last night. We did go up slightly. So our number overall is seventy-four million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, three fifty-eight, which if I remember correctly, it's like three thousand something, I have it here. Thirty-six hundred higher than the number last night. So we went through this, we feel very good about this number. And we feel that this is a much better, more accurate document since it's been reviewed with you folks a few times. So thank you for your input. I'll release the screen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Before I go to the school committee, I just didn't know if there's anybody that wanted to add anything. Dr. Kerbel, Dr. Vidala, I didn't know if there's anything you guys wanted to add before we open it up to the school committee members?
No, the only thing I do want to add would be some of the, the number of positions came down a little bit. So instead of eight full-time positions that were deleted, it's more like six. And then in Unit C, the number of full-time paras was reduced from twelve to ten. And probably the same with the part-time paras. Instead of twelve being deleted from the budget, it's more like eight. Still trying to make sure that we're definitely precise, right? So we'll know more about that tomorrow. That's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kerbel. All right, school committee can open it up for any comments, questions for any of the presenters today? Mr. Miko?
Thank you, through the chair to the, I would say anyone in in central office, whether it's, you know, Mr. Scanlon, or Dr. Kerbel, or Dr. Vidala, Dr. Lord. I guess I have a couple of questions. The first one is regards to athletics, moving those FTEs to the athletic budget. What was the reason for that? And and why is there a savings doing, moving it from the regular budget to the athletic budget? That's the first question, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, if I can answer. What we found was that there's a always this challenge of where employees are in the budget versus physically located. So what the budgets were set up is, is that the phys ed teachers were budgeted for the amount of hours that they spent at each school. What I found when I got here, when I first started reviewing it with the principals and with Mr. Buah, is I showed him a listing, he says, no, that's all different now. And it was just the way the budget was set for twenty, because it's a very fluid situation. So the challenge was keeping that up. And I just realized it was a never-ending battle that I wasn't going to win. So I asked Mark and I asked Josh, can I just put them all together in athletics? Where they're scheduled, we'll end up putting them there and the charge will end up going into the, into the year report based on how many hours they spent at each school. But to me, as long as we have one baseline for the budget, then we can move the budget later on.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, if I could, one more question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. And the same thing to the central office. And first of all, just thank you, thank you for all the work you're doing. It's amazing, especially when we're technically eliminating positions, but but saving employees by moving them into another, another similar position. So I guess that's where my question lies is, and you don't have to answer it now, maybe, maybe later on as as we're moving towards this process tonight. How many actual positions have we eliminated? And how many people, how many employees have we been able to save by moving them into another job through attrition, whether it's retirements, whether it's just transfers? So if we could just get a breakdown of that, because you guys have done such a great job of moving people around and saving people's jobs. And I think the public really needs to know that because we've seen it and I just want to applaud you guys for doing that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the central administration team for working, I'm sure, all weekend through this budget process. I think we're three versions deeper than we were when we met last Thursday. So that tells me you guys are continuing to look at this and try to tweak it so it's most advantageous for us. Before I jump on Mr. Miko's point, which I think is a valid and extremely important point, I want to ask Mayor Betancourt. Are we good at this number, seventy-four million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars?
Yes, I can present that number.
Okay, so I'll speak a little, then I'll ask a couple of questions. My suspicion is that tonight, we're going to, and I'm able to make a motion later on to approve that number. I'm not necessarily approving this budget. And and that's the first time that that's happened in my time on the school committee. We have a number that the mayor's comfortable bringing to the to the city council that he has some confidence in based upon the information that he has, and that's fine. That's all well and good, and that's what we have to work with. The budget is being presented to us, in my personal opinion, has some issues that I think that we can address over time. I just don't know how worthwhile it is to address them without having the ultimate confidence in the actual number that we're allocating. So I don't really want to go through that. That's just my opinion. We can talk about that as a committee a little bit tonight. I think the mayor needs a vote tonight so that we can continue the process of having a public hearing and then this, a number presented to the finance committee of the city council and then ultimately to the city council in a timely manner. And I respect that process and I think that that's important. Going through the budget, Mr. Miko, and I'll say it through the mayor to whomever's able to answer this, and and don't, sometimes I speak a little bit like I'm from Brooklyn and it's because I'm from Brooklyn. Don't take offense in how I say something, please. Where we are, we're losing some positions. And 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 I'm asking these types of questions because of the nature of the way we receive the budget documents this year without the backup, without the, and I understand we're not able to get that through Zoom, but ultimately, at some point, when we truly go through the budget to kind of truly allocate how we're going to spend the seventy-four million, eight hundred thousand dollars, we are going to need the backup, we are going to need the data about. So I don't know which teachers are retiring. I don't know what schools they're retiring from. I don't know if we're losing teachers in any particular school. Doesn't, I don't see a lot of reductions in teachers, but I hear that we're taking, that there are going to be several retirements and whoever's worked their career here deserves a good and happy and prosperous retirement, and I'm happy for them. But I don't know, as I go through the budget, and I'll admit tonight, the version nine, I really didn't have much of a chance to get to it. I only had about ten minutes to look at it before we got on tonight. But I need to know where teachers are leaving from. I need to know what the the power professional positions that we're putting into grants, what we're doing without. You know, so, you know, maybe Ms. Chiota can talk to that, not necessarily tonight. Because again, I don't know that it's terribly relevant tonight. But I kind of need to know what, what, what are we doing without that we would have otherwise had in the nineteen-twenty budget when we didn't put those power professional salaries into some of the grants and and things along those lines. And and I'm saying all this, and before I get to my ultimate point, I think we do have, I think we still have a phys ed line at an elementary school. I saw it quickly, that's still funded, so we may have a few extra bucks.
I think it's at the McCarthy School.
Yeah, that's right. So it is at the McCarthy, we got to pull that fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars out and hopefully it's it's free cash and we can allocate it for something. But I'll let Mr. Vidala, Dr. Vidala and Mr. Scanlon work on that, at least initially, before I chime in. One of the reasons I want to know, what do we, what do we truly have in terms of staff reductions is, is, and Dr. Vidala and I had an opportunity to speak over the weekend and it was a very nice conversation. It was a pleasure speaking with him about a whole bunch of issues. Some budgetary, some beyond that, some philosophical. And and we haven't had a chance to sit down and get together really. So it was, it was a pleasure to take the forty-five minutes or hour or whatever we did talking. But one of the things I did bring to, or I mentioned to Dr. Vidala is the way I see this budget as drafted is it's a budget that is on the backs of students. And what I mean by that is we're taking revolving accounts that could go for a lot of things that we can use and that we can, we need. We're taking grants that are designed to provide services to students and putting salaries in them. And while I don't disagree with Dr. Vidala's statement from last Thursday, you know, it's not a good, it's a one-time practice and and I get that it's a difficult budget. But we got it, my opinion is this pain needs to be shared a little more equitably. You know, there are some reductions in administrative or unit B positions. There are some reductions in some specialists. But I still see teachers or bargaining unit members getting their two percent raise. Something that bothers me a lot when I see twenty-four kids in a kindergarten class or twenty-four kids in a first grade class. You know, we, Dr. Vidala, I talked about some opportunities that may exist. And I just want to bring it out publicly from my perspective. And that's why I'm saying I'm comfortable voting on the seventy-four million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. But I think we need to do a little more work, maybe even quite a bit more work before we get to, before I'm comfortable getting to certain allocations. And after I finish that diatribe, and I apologize to all of you that are, that have been listening to me, to, through the chair to Mr. Scanlon. You know, one of the reasons that this phys ed issue came up is we talked about the disparity in salaries in buildings. And we noticed it, a few of us noticed it, and it seemed, you know, perhaps there was an arithmetic error or it just seemed to be outliers. And we were wondering, we then kind of heard that perhaps some staff members were switching buildings and that caused salary lines within each building to be adjusted. And and I'm perfectly okay, I think you're right in kind of capturing all of these physical education teachers and putting them in the physical education line item. But I still don't know, I'm still not able to tell why those increases were there and if they were properly there or if there was some, something that we need to look at. And the reason for that is simply, you know, as you took them, all the physical education teachers out and put them in one line, that skews that line. So there's nothing historic to look at. And that's, so when I talk about the backup material, I mean, those are things that I'm talking about. And and I'll leave it at that tonight. I know everybody worked hard all weekend and I hope you got to spend a little bit of time with your family because, you know, it is an important weekend to be with family. But so, you know, I think our task is to approve a number tonight, and I think we're ready to do that. And then, you know, continue to work in the weeks and maybe months to come to really define what this budget's going to be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hockman. Would anyone else like to, would like to speak? Mr. Olympio?
Yes, through the chair, I echo Mr. Hockman's sentiments as well. I am prepared to vote in a macro approach, the total amount that we're going to use for the budget. And yes, there, we, I feel like we still have quite a bit of work to do within the details of looking at the backup and seeing where we are going to spend this money. And I would want the public to know that, you know, this is an extremely fluid situation. I mean, we still really don't know what school's going to look like in September. If there's been talk about no gym. If there's no gym, then I don't know what do we do with gym teachers? So it's, again, I'm prepared to vote on the total amount for the budget. But as Mr. Hockman has said, I think we still have substantial work to do in getting to the bottom of the backup behind some of these line items and getting a better understanding what, you know, what positions have been eliminated and where, you know, we have saved some jobs, but I would like to know exactly where some of those people were allocated within the budget. So that's basically all I have to say. And thank you for everybody that contributed to this administration office. I know you worked extremely hard, tons of hours, I can only imagine, and I appreciate it. And but, you know, we still have some work to do over the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Anyone else? Mr. On Notice?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, just very quickly, not to beat the bush on it, but it is correct. I think we'll try to get to a number tonight here more than anything else because we have to. Now, these are the deadlines that we're dealing with. This obviously is a fluid situation. I do want to thank you all for your hard work on this. This obviously is a fluid situation. I do want to thank you all for your hard work on this budget. I know you're doing your best to, you know, provide for our schools and keep people employed and do what we need to do and service the students throughout the district with all the needs that we have. So, you know, I'm comfortable with us getting to a number tonight. I think, you know, the variables, there's plenty of them going forward. You know, the gym note that Mr. Olympio just mentioned is a big one in and of itself. We have no idea what school's really going to look like at all, you know, come the fall. So we're probably going to have to do some adjusting as we learn here. But, you know, we can get to that number tonight. I think that's the first step and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anotis. Anyone else? All right. If it's, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to add to that. The mayor had to step out to cover that other meeting and he will be back shortly. My concern is the same as everyone here. I'm going to be voting on a budget where normally, as a school committee member, I'm able to see how our school year is going to unfold as we go into it. So that I can see how are you going to run a program? How are you going to meet requirements for, you know, special ed for coverage? One of the things that we've always been able to do is to discuss, and we've always had to cut things, but to discuss how the interaction of our budget works with the actual program we have. And I know we're not going to have that opportunity right now. But I am concerned because there is a lot in this budget that I really, I really don't understand. We're, for example, we're taking away the preschool director. I don't understand how we will operate our program without that person. Attendance has been a huge concern of ours. It's a state requirement. We've been working on improving attendance. We've got policies and procedures in place. We're taking our attendance paraprofessional out of the budget. We definitely aren't putting any people back in that we had to cut last year, like, you know, library paras, although I am glad, I'm very glad to see that one is going at the Higgins so that we have a person, at least a person who is responsible for the library. But it concerns me in one of the biggest middle schools in the state of Massachusetts. We don't have, we don't have a school librarian or media specialist for the library and all that goes with that. Our budget is a statement to the community. It reflects community concentrations, what we, what we want to encourage, how we want to operate. And this budget doesn't do that because we have not been able to have that conversation. We haven't got the backup materials, as my colleagues have said, that would show how this is going to unfold. And I know, come the first day of school, right now, we really don't even know what's going to happen. I just want people to understand that we have a budget, but it is going to have to be a very flexible situation when funding either increases, which would be wonderful, or if it decreases again. If our budget does have to decrease and we had to let people go come the start of the school year, how does, how does that, how would that happen? If anyone, Dr. Kerbel, Dr. Vidal, Joe Scanlon, if you could just explain a little bit about what would happen if the money that we're going to request, the $74 million, what if that's not forthcoming come the school year? I know the legislature is going to fund up to, what, the first two months of the 20 fiscal year? I'm not sure. If someone could correct me on that, I would appreciate it.
I'll jump in, Mrs. Dunn. And again, thank you for your concerns. I believe the legislators have said that they're going to do a 1/12 budget in July and potentially a 1/12 budget in August as well. We're hoping to get more numbers. And I think this is a very different process than it's ever been. And I think it's challenging to say, if we don't get the same amount of money, what will be the next on the line for cuts when we don't know what the reopening plans look like? So we had a meeting with the commissioner on Friday. I am optimistic about returning. He was talking about maybe potentially asking the legislators for Level Service Plus, which we had talked about going from Level Service to Level Funded and really just trying to be bare bones. So that was optimistic. And I think that, you know, we have some ideas, but it's really premature to make a decision until we know what reopening looks like. For example, if there are things that can't be done, then we could make different decisions. If there are things that absolutely need to be done, we would need to make sure that we're allocating funding in those areas. So I'm expecting to get something from the commissioner this week around what reopening would look like. And, you know, I know we've talked about having reopening plans in a committee to go through it. And, you know, we will certainly do that. And as the money comes through and as we know what the exact funding will be, and hopefully it'll be a little bit more, we will work with the committee. And I think to everyone's point tonight, we had to get to a number. It's not a number that anybody was comfortable with. We wanted 10 million more, you know? And, you know, we got to this number through a lot of, you know, a lot of collective work, a lot of your ideas, a lot of the ideas of the principals and the other administrators. And we got to a number that the city council will hopefully be comfortable with. The mayor seems to be comfortable with. You know, this, this is sort of, we plant the flag in the ground right here and we work together. And I think that we're all committed to working with one another to make adjustments within our current constraints. So today we get to a number and the city council will hopefully appropriate that amount. And then we work together to make sure that, you know, we're allocating the funds where we need to based on, as we get more information about where we're going and what those reopening plans are, we can adjust within the allocation that the city council has given us. So that's my long-winded way of saying that, you know, we're a team and we're going to work together and we'll put out the best product that we can for the kids and for the people of PD.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Vidal. It wasn't long-winded at all. Will we, as a school committee, have a chance after, after this budget is done? Will we then be able to have some time at each of our meetings to be able to be told about the actual plans that this budget is going to support? You know, for example, like with preschool or with any of the positions that have been cut, how those duties will be handled? How, what type of changes in the day-to-day operation of the schools? Will we be able to discuss that? I understand we have to get that number in. But can we, can we start that? And I know it is kind of difficult because, again, we don't know what's going to happen in September. But we do know, right now, we're looking at changes already, you know, based on what I see in the budget. And I put that out again to any member of the staff that wants to answer that.
Yeah, and I'll jump in again. And I definitely appreciate, you know, that the whole, the whole line of questions and the perspective. I think over the summer, we're going to sit down and really work as a school committee in central administration to really develop what does the fall look like? What is it going to look like and how do we fund that? Our, our goal through this whole thing was really to make sure that there is as little impact on the students as possible. There are a couple of places where there will be some programs combining due to small enrollments. But we are trying to do everything we can to make sure that the kids don't feel the impact and that the teachers, you know, are working together and that, you know, we're all tightening our belts a little bit so that the kids don't see the impact. And, you know, everything that's going on behind the scenes and all of that thing that we're doing is to make sure that the kids have that, the best opportunity they can when they return to school. And I'm hopeful that we'll return to school in the fall and that we'll provide them with as many resources as we can. And I think, you know, despite all of the cuts that we had to make, I think that our biggest thing was that the people who are in front of students consistently will not change. And I think that's, that's our biggest thing is we really want to make sure that the kids don't feel it on a day-to-day basis. So that's our ultimate goal. There might be some administrative things where some people are picking up some extra duties that they, you know, maybe hadn't done in the past and, you know, taking on a little bit more responsibility for one year. And, you know, we're prepared to do that so that our kids are in front of, are in front of their teachers and have the support, you know, for example, the kindergarten paras and things like that so that they have those people in front of them and they can experience, you know, the quality education that they're going to get in the city of PD.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions related to COVID-related expenses and how we're dealing with them. But I'm going to hold that just in case anyone else had any comments or questions in line with what we were all just discussing. My question is in a bit of a different direction. And I can see almost everybody. Oh, Mr. Miko, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to someone in central office, if you could. So I have a question. So tonight, if we vote on the $74 million and change to approve it, but we don't approve the other part of the budget, which is all the changes, I guess my question is, wouldn't we be hampering our central office to make changes? Because then essentially, none of those cuts are being cut if we don't vote on it. So that brings us back to our original budget. So I'm not quite understanding that. And the other part of this is as well in the fact that if we vote on the $74 million budget on its own, if we do get more funding, then we can bring back some of those positions, depending on what we're doing, whether it's remote learning or a hybrid situation or going back full-time. But just to vote on one part and not the other, I'm just not, I'm not seeing that value because then we are hampering our, I believe we're hampering our central office and making those decisions to get to the $74 million and change number that, that we feel comfortable that we should be at or the mayor feels comfortable and hopefully the city council would feel comfortable voting on. And the other part, speaking of city council, will they vote on a budget that is $74 million and change but not see any, you know, where the cuts are coming from? So I'll yield and see what anyone else has to say about that, but I'm a little conflicted on that. So just wanted to hear what everyone else had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Miko. Very good points. Would anyone from central want to take that question on? Well, never mind. Not that you want to take that question on.
Mr. Hockman, did you want to jump in or do you want me to respond to Mr. Miko or how do you want to handle it?
Yeah, I can jump in quickly. You know, Mr. Miko, that's precisely what we're being asked to do. We're being asked to facilitate the process, which I think helps central administration, helps Dr. Vidal and his team in at least moving forward with an understanding as to the amount of the allocation that the city council approves. Without voting tonight, certainly we're voting tonight without knowing the details. And if we don't vote tonight, it doesn't get moved on to the city council. If it doesn't get moved on to the city council, we're not a taxing authority. We don't have the authority to spend money from the city. It's the city council that has that, the authority to appropriate funds. So that's the value in voting tonight is that we at least get to an understanding of the number. And I will tell you, if I didn't have the confidence and respect for all of you and the years that we've worked together in being able to get to a budget that is at least appropriate under the circumstances where we, you know, as a body, will get a majority vote and hopefully a unanimous vote, but at least a majority vote. I mean, we've done through budgets and worked diligently and effectively. We've collaborated. We've talked about priorities that we each have had year over year. We've consulted with the administrators and principals to talk to them about their priorities. We've talked to staff members, to teachers, to paraprofessionals, to crossing guards, you know? I'm confident that we know how to go through this process. We just don't have that information yet because nobody does yet. But I'm confident that we'll continue to operate in the same professional and collaborative manner. And that's, that's what I think the value is in approving this number tonight so that we can get the city council to actually appropriate it. Again, subject to some sort of change. I mean, Ms. Dunn makes important points. You know, we're speculating on some things that we don't quite know, but the mayor seems confident in it. I assume that if he's confident in it, that his finance team has vetted it and this is the best information we have to work with on June 22nd. So I hope that answers your question a little bit. I'm not comfortable writing a blank check for $74 million either. And it seems like that's what we're doing. But I got to know Dr. Vidal a little bit over the weekend and talking to him in the few months since he's been hired. And I'm confident that he's, just in the manner in which he's conducting himself during these budget meetings and the manner in which he's spoken to us at the school committee meetings that he's attended, I'm confident, you know, that Joe Scanlon's got a grasp on the numbers now. He's got his feet under him. He's relatively new to the district also. But we have a really talented team in central administration. We have a really talented school committee. So I think, I'm ultimately confident that we're able to put this together. It's going to be backwards. You know, we're working backwards this year, but that's what we're forced to do. That's the deck we have. You know, like Mr. Miko, like you've said, in support of our teachers and staff members that, you know, made remote learning work. No one did it before March and they got it done. And we're going to do a budget the same way. You know, we're going to get it done and we're going to get it done right where we can get as much for our students and staff as possible. But, you know, that's, that's a really long-winded answer, Dr. Vidal. If you want to add something, feel free.
Well, I appreciate it. And Mrs. Dunn, if I may.
Yes, please.
My understanding is that we are voting on this budget as a moment in time. It's a snapshot. And every year, the committee has the authority to change some of the line items within the appropriation of the school committee. And the school department, you know, from central administration standpoint, we can't spend a penny outside of what is voted unless there's an additional vote from the school committee. And so what, what today is, if you are willing to do so, and we hope that you are, it's a vote, as Mr. Hockman said, of confidence in this number and in the fact that the majority of these line items are really good. And we know that there will be some changes, but it's also a commitment from us that we will work with the committee and this is your budget, it's our budget. And there will be changes as there are every year and you will vote on every single one of them. No changes will be made without the committee's approval and the committee's vote because you have that authority. And so today is, here's a snapshot of what we did and we're asking the city council to appropriate this amount of money and knowing that our work isn't done and we will continue to work together, but no changes will be made on these line items without a vote of this committee. And I think that's, that's really where we work collaboratively as a group and say, we're in this together, we know that we're not done, but we feel pretty confident of where we are. This is a pretty good budget considering the constraints that we have and we know that we're willing to work together and make those changes that you will all approve or we can't make them.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Mr. Miko?
Just wanted to make a comment through the chair to Dr. Vidal in central office. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that, Dr. Vidal. That was very clear, concise. And again, we will be voting on this. And as the mayor alluded last week and we've talked about it over the last few minutes, this is still fluid, as Mr. Olympio said earlier. So even though we are voting on this particular budget, you know, through you and central office, there will be changes depending on additional, hopefully additional revenue that comes in from the state or the feds. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Anyone else? Okay. Just before moving on, and thank you both, Dr. Vidal and Mr. Miko. I do have a question. As I said, it was related to the COVID-19 expenses. We know that there is going to be an increase in costs for supplies that we may need to bring in for the school year. Are those increases reflected in this budget? Will those costs be separated out? Hopefully, we're going to get those funded by the state. Right now, it really looks like an unfunded mandate. But I just wondered, had you anticipated that in this document or is it going to be dealt with separately?
Absolutely. Thank you. And I can jump in. There are three funding sources that we will have for COVID-related expenses and none of them are related to the appropriation of the school committee. So the three, the one that we have personally is the ESER, the Emergency Relief Funding, that we could use that money. And the city has also received an additional fund for COVID-19-related expenses. And we are working with the city using that funding source so that our emergency relief can go directly to students. So that's been a huge help again, and I thank the mayor and I thank, you know, his office for being able to allow us to use that small amount of money that we got for emergency relief to provide a stopgap on some of the things and supplement our budget and where those supplies and materials. We've already been working with the people in the mayor's office, with Jim Haiti, with Dan Doucette and Joe Scanlon have all been working together on providing a list of all the PPE that we would need and the additional supplies and resources that we'll need. And it won't come out of this budget. And so we've been very fortunate that we've worked so collectively and so collaboratively with the city that it won't necessarily come out of this and that we will be able to do it. The third funding source that I mentioned is, I believe it's a FEMA Emergency Relief reimbursement that we are also using some of the remote learning expenses that we have that Joe has already put in for reimbursement on that as well. So there are those three little buckets that we have. And primarily, we've just been very fortunate that we'll be working with the city to provide those materials and it won't necessarily come out of the appropriation.
Okay. Thank you. That puts my mind at ease a bit more. Is there anyone else? Anything anyone else would like to bring up? Oh, Mr. Hockman. Oh, Mr. Hockman, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry. If everyone's satisfied with questioning and responses tonight, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Is everybody ready? I'll be honest, I wanted to make one moment. Oh, Mr. Anotis, you want to make one?
Oh, no, I was just getting ready. I'm.
No, I just wanted to say that I think that right now, we're voting on a budget with a bottom line. We may not be happy with the way that the lines above that are put in or the impact of those, but to be perfectly honest, have any of us ever voted on a budget we liked? Seriously? Seriously? We go into it with a lot more background, a lot more knowledge, but when you get right down to it, we do vote on a bottom line. But as Dr. Vidal has said, as school committee members, we do have the ultimate control over the budget. So as money comes in, see, I keep saying it's going to come in. We will be able to have those discussions. That was why I'd asked that question earlier, just to make sure that, you know, normally we're looking at school plans and talking with principals and hearing, you know, the hopes and dreams of each of the schools and how it's reflected in the plan and the budget. We basically are going to work backwards. And in one way, we really have, we have the number in front of us. It is what it is. We're going to survive. Our kids are going to get a good education. And that's what we need to do. We will have a lot of work in the future, trying to make this budget work, trying to make the funding sources come in and just trying to take care of everything. But I think, and I know I'm speaking for others, but I will say, I'm very pleased with the staff we have, with the amount of work that you've all put into this budget, with the amount of work that you have put in just keeping our system going in a completely different world. It is appreciated. And thank you. Thank you for your work on this. So if anyone else has a comment, if you'd like to.
One quick comment. No, I want to reiterate that. I think that's very important for folks to know. We are almost in a sense, we're buying the house while we're still building it here. And I think that's something that people need to understand. Normally, we build it and then we buy it. Now we're just working and dealing within our means because we really don't know what the next few months is going to look like. And it would be great if there's additional funding that comes. And I think we more have to look at federal funding that would come to the state and then come to us. And I think that's important for folks to understand. It's not as if the state is in any different situation than a municipality is right now. So I think federally, you know, that's where you need to see movement come for us to be able to do some of the things we're normally used to doing here. But I have extreme confidence in this team. You know, we've worked with you all. We brought you guys together and you have excelled. So I think it's important to the city to know that this document you've given us, it's a good roadmap, you know, like anything else. It will probably change. There'll be tweaks here and there, but we're going to work through this and we're going to deal within our means right now. We're living within our means and the number that we know we can work with. And then we'll go from there. So I'm ready to vote. I think, Mr. Hockman, I know you were going to make a move there. So I'm good on my comments and ready to go with the number tonight. And that's what we're doing, a number.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anotis. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and thank you to everyone that has worked on this budget to this point. Before I make the motion, I did omit a point I wanted to make earlier. The, and we talked about it Thursday night, the art teacher at the high school is still something that's sticking on my side and I would hope that we're going to see some movement on that. We could talk about that as we go through the details next month or whenever we get to it. So I'm going to make a motion to approve and ask for an appropriation of $74,854,358 from the PBD City Council to be allocated in a manner determined at a later date.
Second.
Okay. All right, we've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Anotis. Ms. Harris, we need to do a roll call.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Anotis?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn, you want to step down? I'll take the chair and you can vote.
Oh, thank you. It's okay, but I would like it noted that if I could vote, I would vote in the affirmative.
So.
Oh, actually, yes. Let Mr. Hockman go right ahead. Take the chair for a second and then I will vote. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Harris, can you please continue the roll call?
Sure. Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. Thank you.
It's easier to do virtually than it is in person, isn't it, Ms. Dunn, to change chairs?
A little bit.
If I may?
Yes.
So now that we've, this would be the point where, you know, we would, I think recess for one further meeting and that would be for the public meeting, which we're going to have and we're going to do timely and in compliance with the statute. I would ask that, under the circumstances, and maybe we need some legal opinion from this, because we've never really done it, but I would hope that we can continue to recess the budget meetings even beyond that and beyond the city council vote so that we can take up the matter as we get the information, both from the state and city levels. I don't know that we're able to do that legally. I'm really not sure. It's never come up before.
Actually, I don't, I don't know if we could, I don't think you can recess kind of indefinitely. But I also know that we can have that as a standing agenda item at every one of our meetings and then be able to discuss this budget going forward at each meeting, just as we've had Mr. Scanlon discuss our budget over the past several months. So I don't think there's really any problem. I think that if we keep it, keep it right at the top of our list and have those discussions, if we needed to have a special meeting concerning the budget, then we would definitely, you know, set a new one. But I think that because we have voted on this budget and we are turning it to the city council, I think it's probably best to just vote it, submit it, and then going forward, make sure that we discuss it every week. But we could ask, we could ask Mr., you know, Attorney Khan for his input on that.
Yeah, respectfully, I'd be most comfortable with that just because this is so unique. And if we do need to adjourn and re-notice, provide a new notice for a budget meeting, you know, that's fine. Whatever he, you know, says gives us advice to do, I'm sure we'll follow. I just want to make sure we do it right. I do think, however, that we are going to need independent budget meetings moving forward at a time when we do get that information. I think it's going to, we're really, to Mr. Miko's point, you know, we got to, we got to move into, or maybe to Mr. Anotis's point, we have to move into the house at some point when it's built and we have to, you know, determine and let Dr. Vidal know what the drapes look like and what the carpeting looks like sooner rather than later, hopefully.
Sure. It is a good point. I think that for every school year, what we've done is we've voted on the budget, we've gone into the school year, we've discussed minor issues with funding. We've gotten our reports timely basis by Mr. Scanlon. But this year, the budget is going to be a very active topic. It's probably, probably by next week. And it is something we will all have to stay on top of and I think we'll be okay. But yes, I'll make sure that we ask Attorney Khan and ask him for an answer before Thursday. Okay. Right now, our budget is going to be presented at our Thursday public hearing. And at that time, the public will have the opportunity to speak on the budget. And we are also submitting the current budget to the city council for their budget hearings. And they have one on Thursday night as well. We haven't been told yet what night the school budget will be discussed. That's still a bit up in the air, although I think they're meeting right now and they'll probably have a better idea after tonight. Just so you're prepared, we were told that we might need to have our budget discussed on Monday. So our staff would be ready to do that with the council and all of us. We, you know, we attend. It's moral support for you guys. We will be there for you, but the work of presenting it and answering the questions will be up to all of you. So if, does anyone have any further questions on this? I just have to check. Okay. All right. If there are no further questions or no further discussion, I think we'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we'll see everybody Thursday night at, is it 5:00 or 5:30? I think it's 5:30. Okay. All right. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, Ms. Dunn, I'll make a motion to recess until we get that opinion from Mr. Khan and then we can adjourn at some point. But I think we keep it, we recess until we get the public hearing anyway. Which, yeah. So I'll make a motion to recess.
Actually, I'll be honest with you. On the motion, I will be honest with you, because that meeting has been posted as a public meeting. All right, recess. And if that's not the right one, if that's not the right way to do, to go, Attorney Khan will let us know. Either way, we'll see everybody Thursday night. All right. So, Mr. Hockman, a motion to recess?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Anotis? Okay. Ms. Harris, if you could do a roll call.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Anotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Papender? Oh, sorry. Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Okay. I'm not, I don't have to vote on this one. All right, thank you. Okay, everyone, thank you very much for a good meeting, a tough, tough one. And we'll see you all Thursday. Take care.